Ready. Welcome, everybody. To the work session. And you guys will have to help me today. But together, we will get through all of this to get a big meeting together. All right, I guess I will just turn it over to. Margot. Who take it away. That sounds good.
Okay, yeah, that's easy for a step, right?
Yeah, really, it's like this part I can handle.
Yeah, so, um, what I thought, we have about two hours, right? So you guys need a break and then you're going into your regular board meeting. Is. Kind of just take a pause because you have been through a very, we've all been through an incredibly stressful few years in terms of COVID and the impact on us ourselves personally. And. Just the operation of the library and what you had to go through in terms of, you know, shutting it down and keeping it relevant and all things that you did as a board and staff. And at the same time continuing to pursue your plans that you set in motion way before COVID was ever anything anybody ever heard of. So it's been a while since we have really taken the time and with new board members and and to really look at. Your. The vision that was drafted originally and accepted by previous boards and what was called success factors. I know you guys probably look at the, you know, you had your board orientation, but it's really been quite a bit of time since you've had the time to take a step back, not talk about anything but just how you want to interact with support. So that that's kind of what we had planned for today's work session and. Because, you know, this board has worked really well together over the years and. And it's really important to invest in yourselves and talk about how you want to interacting. So this is an opportunity to do that. We're not going to get into any, any like content-y stuff. We're not going to talk about, you know, buildings and sites and anything else. We're going to just talk about. Your interactions, how you want to make decisions, how would your meetings look like, how you want them to run. Just what would make this board be effective, which does not mean that you all agree all the time. It's not the goal ever of a board. But how you can be effective and, and trust each other and be transparent and accountable to the public as you do your work. So, um. So that's kind of what, what I had planned was to go through the. The vision and success factors and stuff that was, you kind of looked at it a year ago, but I looked at the meeting and we really didn't really spend much time doing that. So. Okay, so what I would like to do is just set some working agreements, which I used to do a lot and then just kind of didn't stop doing it, but. Hopefully, I know how to write on a book chart because it's been like a billion years. It feels really weird to be doing like real work again, right? So just what would make, what agreements would you like to make for the next two hours that would make this meeting as productive as possible? And I wrote some down that I'd rather just refer to you guys and then, you know, I'll always pop in from my chat. You don't hire me for shyness, yeah.
And I think it's really important that we're actively listening. We're really listening to one another. We're not understanding that we repeat what we think we heard.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask, how did you know that, that people were listening, like? So to you, what does that look like? Do you feel like?
How does it look?
Yeah.
If the way people respond to what I said, if they're not understanding, that's, that's on me too. You know, word it differently.
Okay, but you also ask, you could ask questions for understanding as opposed to maybe people just immediately retorting or something. Okay.
Well, one good way is to start active listening is I repeat what I think you said.
So like a paraphrase?
Well, no.
Or repeat?
Repeat. Say exactly what I think you said. If I'm wrong, then I need to break like that.
Okay, so kind of check for understanding, repeating.
I'd like to see us remain on target. So can we seem to weave or. Take way too much time.
So do you have thoughts about how to do that? And we'll spend more time on this.
Whatever the subject is, say on that subject.
I guess be mindful of the subject matter.
And also be mindful of this time.
Yeah, I know you're meaning to take very long. So, and I want to spend, we can spend a little bit more time talking about that as we go through the interaction agreement.
I would say. Remain rooted. In the present and future. You know, I think you've spent. Fair amount of time going back over what has happened in the past. And obviously, we can't change that. So to really be cognizant of this is how we want to operate now and going forward so that we can really have good discussions.
Without one that like, you know, I mean, history's important, but right. And that these, this fits into that, I would think. These two can be connected.
Right. And then I would also say. Really actively participate and be honest because. I think for these discussions to be rich, we have to know what's on people's minds. And, and to hold back and to not share what we're thinking doesn't help anybody because then it comes around later and, you know, that's where some of our dysfunction has happened. Okay? Other things?
But that, to my mind, that almost implies that. We're not actually stating what we state.
What do you, I hear that stating what?
If someone makes a statement or opinion, I would have to take that as a state. But that is their opinion, not that they have ulterior motives to that opinion, what they're saying. That's where I repeat what they're saying and isn't what they really want to mean, they're really mean. That's our time to clarify, to tell us what really is on their mind and why they're saying what they're saying. Why do they have that opinion?
Yeah, to me, it's not so much that as. Like withholding, withholding opinions, you know, like, like not saying what's on our mind rather than misstating what's on our mind. It's, it's like not saying it and kind of keeping our thoughts to ourselves until they're revealed later. So, I mean, it fits into what you always say, Margot, about no surprises. So when we discuss something, we really discuss it and hold back.
Sometimes I call that having the real meeting during the meeting and not in the parking lot after the meeting or, you know, in the ladies' room. That would leave you out bravely. Don't want to do that. So, you know.
Hey, I've been there.
No, but, I mean, having a real meeting group, is that kind of what you're getting at, Anne? It's like, if you have an opinion, have it happen at the meeting. Yeah.
I have a couple to add.
One thing I would add. When somebody expresses their opinion. Oftentimes, we find. That we're having our internal conversation. Developing the argument against the opposition. And that really blocks us from understanding. And that's where the active listening comes in. You don't have your internal conversation. You try to understand what they are actually saying and repeat it. So you do. And. That's important. And that often shows up. Your internal conversation shows up when the first thing you respond to is an argument. And we've always, in the past, I've been in meetings where we try to agree with the other person's position, even though we disagree with it. By saying, well, I think what you're saying is. And I might be able to agree with that if this is what you're meaning. Rather than saying, well, no, that's not right.
And of course, there's, there's a balance between. Remaining on target, being mindful of time and, and listening. So you're gonna, that's a tricky thing. We can talk a little bit about that. How, you know, when, when kind of has a person been listened to enough that you need to move on? Or when do you need to spend more time? And it's certainly, there's no, there's no cookie kind of approach to that. There's some things to take more time than others don't. But I think that's part of the challenge of being respectful, listening and yet being timeful and mindful of time and efficient. Okay.
We're one of those also the, that we agreed to disagree.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, you know, effective boards are not five zero votes all the time. It's, you know, you guys know this from your policy. You can be three, two, four, one, but you've agreed to, once you vote. To support the voice of the board. So, yeah, it's fine to disagree. That. Need to disagree. It would be, you know, you don't want group thing. You don't want everybody always agreeing. Oh, yeah, we'll do exactly what Todd says. All the time. Right?
My wife would tell you that.
Yeah. So you're right. I mean, I think that's, it's very important. Any others? This is, and this is good that we're doing this because I think you're surfacing some of the things that have been kind of getting in the way.
I've always found that when I'm sharing a meeting. The time is less important. Than understanding. Having the other, have everybody feel like what they are expressing, their opinion, has been truly understood and considered. And either. Agree to or not agree with them, that is. Time is not a factor in terms, in terms of reaching decision. The understanding. Is more important than time. Not at all. Time is flexible.
I, I agree with what you're saying, Ray. I totally agree that if it's, if it's a subject that is part of us moving forward as a board, if it's part of us understanding, but, and I, if I'm putting words in your mouth, Bunny, please tell me that I feel like at times, I know I'm guilty of this, getting off onto a tangent that really is not helping us come to a decision. That's, that at least to me, that's a time issue because if it's, if it's something that doesn't really have anything to do with the board decision or moving us forward to understanding, that's a waste of time because we've got busy schedules. So I think that's, for me, that's.
But if we're diverging, remaining on topic is critical.
Okay, so there, so we'll go more into this for sure this, this morning. You know, remaining on topic. Maybe not. We, you know, rehash, rehash, kind of those kinds of things which can, kind of where are the time? Where are those potential time? Word like shoots or something that can take you from time sucks or I wasn't going to say right. Yeah, so we'll come back to this, you know. But it could be like the kinds of things you're identifying, not taking away from the importance of that dialogue, but being very mindful of. Not just, what I'm hearing people say is if, if we don't stay on target, then we can't have a good dialogue and understand each other. It actually becomes a barrier to having a good dialogue. So we'll, we'll come back to this. In fact, I'm gonna give a little red pen just leaving.
If you want to reach consensus. Then the real key is that everyone has a feeling that, hey, they have been heard and understood. And at the end of that. If the consensus is that, yeah, we've heard you, we understand this. But the rest of the board feels differently. That's okay. What, where we run into trouble, right, as other boards run into trouble is when individuals feel they haven't been understood. They've been heard but not understood. And they have no better way to, they end up repeating.
Yep.
It's just like, I was reminded when we were in Mexico, I mean, this American woman off at the counter talking to a Mexican lady, and clearly, the Mexican lady didn't understand English. And the way to solve that was the Americans spoke louder.
Yeah. We don't want that. I'm, I'm just gonna add, just with your permission, which we're doing right now, is focus on the issue or the behavior. Not, not the person. So for our conversation today, we are, we're really talking about your operations, your, you know, not, not going here and going, Anne, no, you're, just want to see if she's awake.
I am, I'm right. I'm actively listening.
One other that I would add, and I know this is difficult, but I've found that using phones during meetings, and this is not for hearing assistance, but, you know, can take away from. The. People being focused on the work that's happening. So I'm hoping today that we can have no phone, no texting. I actually think it affects the trust among board members when people do that. I've seen that, you know, in other meetings and, and I'm guilty of picking out my phone. I was just worried I hadn't turned it off. If it goes off, I would turn it off. So I just was thinking about those two things. So anything else you guys want to add? Everybody agree to these? Well. I thought it was a sticky time. Yeah, I hate this. So, all right, those good, good ideas. So before we go in, so looking at the, the vision and the success factors. So, yeah, my plan was to go through the vision that you looked at, you could go up the success factors, amend the interaction agreements and then talk about, we can go back to, talking about your meetings and we can be, talk about how, what that looks like, kind of that balance of listening and time efficiency or whatever you want to call it effectiveness and. Yeah, so that's the plan. So anybody, anything else you want to, any other expectations for this morning that we need to surface before?
I just have one, kind of, kind of hit on it, but just knowing what's coming over the next three years. The, the full agendas on board meetings are just gonna continue.
Okay.
And. If we have time, coming up with some, just some agreements or some tricks or something about how we can. Go through some pretty big agendas. In a timely manner without being, being there for twelve o'clock.
Beyond, before midnight. Yes, okay.
Can I add a little something, please, to that? I feel it would be really beneficial to me to have more time as a board to have discussions because when we do go into our agendas, it is so full and we move quickly from, you know, from action to action. And oftentimes, I feel like. This is a lot of information to process, but also we don't have the time as a board to really discuss what's behind some of that. And these work sessions are very helpful. That's a good way to do that. But just to have more time as a board. For discussion.
So how, how do you build that in, right? That's.
Can you describe what that would look like, what we would do? Well, um, just as an example, over the past couple of months, we've been receiving a lot of information from our constituents. But as a board, we don't, you know, we don't really talk about that or. You know, there, there may be a switch in what we're doing with these then library. This is just off the top of my head. When as a board, would we have time to talk about that? Because things, the facility plan is kind of changing. And I know we're not talking facilities per se.
No, but you're warning about the, the operational.
Yeah, but just, there's lots of pieces to the system's puzzle that I think we need as a time as a board to kind of talk how that's kind of coming together.
As opposed to spending another six hours in a board meeting, which I tend to, after a while, zone out.
Right.
Would it be helpful to have more information in the packet so that you have time ahead of time to process it? Or would it help to read over that information? Have a list of questions that might clarify some things. I'm trying to do things ahead of time so that we aren't spending six hours.
I think the board packets are, are pretty complete. There's a lot of information. I know Anne and Todd have been very responsive when I do, just have a quick question. But it, to me, it's, it's more that, that ability to have time in our agenda to have a little more full discussion.
What I, yeah, what I hear you saying is we need to talk about the information that's presented and talk more about the big picture. Directions that we're headed. And I don't know, I mean, given. How long, how long the meetings have been.
I know.
It's like, what, what do we do about that as a board? Do we schedule work sessions? Do we meet more often? Because, because I agree with Bunny. I mean, it's like these all day ones we come out and they return to the slash.
Yeah.
So do we have? Do we have some more? Do we need to have work sessions on a different day or more often than? We're having them. To have those discussions.
All right, I wonder too, instead of doing three hours, maybe just an hour before. I mean, shorten the, the work session because it, like you said, Bunny, that, that all day session we do kind of things start to blur together and it's hard to kind of keep focus.
So you're saying like a one hour targeted, we will talk about this one thing for one hour, but that's it.
Oh, so, okay, so it seems like, let's stay on this topic, right? You're talking about your meetings and this is a big deal to everyone. So. So, yeah, how, how do you, so you have different kinds of meetings, right? And you have meetings where you have. Maybe what you're, I'm trying to, you know, I've watched some of your meetings, so I, I know what you're talking about. If there's a mix. Mixed expectations perhaps in meetings and then they get to be way long and you don't actually accomplish the dialogue or understanding that you want because everything's gotten big. You're falling over by that time, right? Is that, would that be a fair way to describe it? So how, because you have different kinds of work that you do as a board. Right? You have like. Decisions that need to be made and votes that need to be made and.
Right, just keeping up with the business part of what we need to do and keeping up with the schedule and the decisions we have to make is a whole meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
But then, as we look at this. Vision statement, we're, we're supposed to be providing policy direction too, you know, and, and I agree with Anne that some of these things, it's, it's kind of like we're. We're working on sort of shared assumptions that we've never really talked about.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
It seems like part of it, about going, jumping to solutions is. Part of it is. We meet once a month and. It all gets, this, this is a great example. This, today's meeting is going to have two public hearing. And three executive session. And in the past, everyone said, well, we've never had two executive sessions before, a month ago. Anyway, it may be time to start looking at some other way of doing it. Doing it once a month may not. I don't think it'd be the answer.
So you have executive sessions and you have work sessions.
Well.
And you have.
Well, the executive session is just an agenda topics that needs to be done.
In.
And not put in our, not public.
Right.
But what we have is a lot of big issues kind of each month.
Right, yeah.
And, and really. Kind of what. Anne's getting to is I have a whole list. Very important topics that I would love to have my, my staff report on. That are not anything where you need to make a decision, but I think they would be very important for, for you to understand. A good example is right now. There are a lot of challenges to books and public libraries, not just in the state, but right here in central Oregon. And. It'd be a very, and we have very effective presentation that we can have from, from Emily O'Neil. Just, they would take an hour just for us to understand what's the topic, what are the issues? And kind of remind ourselves of our board responsibilities around that. And, and that's not, that's not one where making a big decision affects our future, but it's one that we should be informed on.
Right, that we should know and answer. Our constituents say something.
Yeah.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's one where if we did, for example, if we did that today, that would probably start at four o'clock.
Yeah. But if you could figure out a way to make your six hour meetings, if you could. Be more efficient in some of those business meetings and it's like re, you're rewaiting a little bit. I think is what Anne is bringing it up, which is where do we put? We need to make room for these other things. So you feel like you have the big picture of things and you have time for. So how do you do that?
Because we used to have space in, within the meetings to be able to do that stuff and now we don't. So it's, it's just like the workload that's gone up.
Can we separate them into, I know we have work sessions, which is to talk about some of these other things that we want more information. But because we have a. Meeting that's a business meeting. Because we need to take care of business.
Another than your other meeting.
Would be informational or something.
Educational or whatever. So we're gonna come back to this because I think this is a big topic of kind of what. And like you say, want to be efficient, you want to listen to each other, but. Doesn't sound like anybody wants to keep going the way we've been going. Doesn't sound like anybody wants to keep going the way we've been going. Is that, would everybody agree to that, that something needs to change in your meetings? So, let's try some different things. So, in order to do that, and we don't have to spend, here is an example, we don't spend hours hopefully going through this. This is the vision statement that you actually looked at and revised a year ago. Um, and, yeah. So, it, the three paragraphs, just to remind everybody, or if you haven't been through this before. Was, the paragraph first one is, what does it want our reputation to be in the community? You know, I always think, you know, somebody, if I was, you know, at a table somewhere in a restaurant. And the next table, they were talking about the library. You know, what would they, what would I want them to say? It's aspirational. Um, so that's number one. Second paragraph is what the teamwork is necessary to achieve that. And the third paragraph is, the kind of so what to the organization? The value to the organization of how they end up that board. So I think, I want, I wanted to step back and have us just look at this again, because you've invested a lot of time in writing this. But it's really important and, um. What's more, I think, here's clear research that an effective board has a huge impact. On the effectiveness of the meeting. There's no question about it. And you've probably in your lifetime have seen boards that have gone down the tubes and it affects the overall functioning of the organization. So, number, first paragraph.
Other, other question.
Yeah.
We have the board vision. When Chris Van Dyck called me up and said, he's doing a vision statement. He said, well, we have the vision. Why is this vision that you're working on, why is that for, that for the library? Is it for the board?
Yeah.
All of us as a whole? If we have two visions.
The, I believe.
Are we?
Yeah.
I, I think we accept this vision. I, I think we have to be proactive and be able to change over time. Things change and you need to update and revisit some things. And that's what I thought like we did with Chris. We revisited what was the vision and maybe clarified it.
So, do we have two workful visions?
No, I, let me ask.
You know, I know what you're going to say, because you underlined it. This vision we're talking about right now is just about this board. It's not about the library, it's about how you operate.
Yeah.
That's completely separate from the vision for what the library, what the library is.
You don't even need to reuse the word vision, you could use word framework or whatever you want. But what Chris was working on is organizational everybody. This is kind of the, the foundation, word foundation. For, and the, when you adopted this, which I didn't bring this to you, it's like before my home or someone else, they use the word vision. But if that gets in the way, it is just kind of a picture of how you want your board to operate. Your, your, um, reputation.
And the vision is, it's a vision of what this board looks like if we're operating at the highest level.
Yes, yeah, it's a board picture of success.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you don't have to.
The word vision that's throwing me off here.
Yeah.
You could put any word.
But anywhere you want, yeah. Picture of success, and you know, that you've always used. So I hope it doesn't throw anybody off, because it's not an organizational picture. It's just a picture of the board. And I'm sure there are other visions within the library, you must have teams that have visions and, you know, for their work and whatnot, so. Okay, makes sense? Okay. So first paragraph, uh, reputation with your customers.
Is that how you would like to be described? Anything missing? The one thing that. And I'm not sure where it would go. But I think if we're looking at our public reputation and how we operate. Somewhere in that description, there needs to be the concept that we're communicating that. To the public, to our stakeholders. That we're, that we're, um. This is what we're doing and people understand that that's what we're doing. You know, because it's like, we're talking about our reputation and we're making like stellar decisions. But nobody understands those decisions, then that isn't achieving the reputation that we want to achieve. If that makes sense? I'm not saying that very well.
I'm not sure what to say there.
Well, if, say if, so we're saying we're, we're seeking out information. We're making these good decisions, we're ethical, we're efficient, but if, but, but that doesn't really have. If nobody knows what we're doing, how do we have? We could have a terrible reputation and still be doing those things, if that makes sense? If the public doesn't understand why we're doing what we're doing.
It would be like communicating these, whatever their wording is, effectively to the public.
Right. And, and the staff, for that matter, all of our stakeholders.
So.
Yeah.
Am I hearing what you're saying is not that the public doesn't know what we're doing? But they don't understand why you made a decision?
I'm not sure they know what we're doing, not everybody sits in on these meetings. So, I think a good line of communication, I, I don't know how we do that, we send out some.
But would that be two separate things though, wouldn't it?
Pardon me?
Wouldn't that be two separate things? One is communicating to the public what we've done. But also communicating to the public why we reached that decision.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to get into the nitpicks of why to the public, this is our decision. If we did the why, it would need to be pretty short, otherwise you're going to. It could cause a lot of confusion.
But you do see here, you say we seek out information that identifies needs and concerns of the public. Right, to assure they're, and so there's something just about communicating. Like, you're seeking out, which is, you're talking about, you want to be known as a. As a board that seeks people's concerns and. If that doesn't capture it, you don't think that.
Well, that's seeking out, but you haven't given back. Yeah, but we haven't given back.
Yeah.
So maybe we add, the board operates in an open, ethical, responsible and efficient manner. So that, so that open, that word open implies that we're communicating well with the public.
Transparent or.
Transparent, yeah, either way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Something with communication that is critical, especially coming from a board who's making your decisions, is the one voice. That's where the confusion, I believe, has occurred in the public not understanding what we're doing or why we're doing. They're hearing the press information. So, how can we make it so that with one voice, we're coming forward?
And I think that, hold that thought, because I think it's in the next paragraph, but it is not. One of the things I was thinking about is, I was trying to make what everybody was saying, um. In reading through the, all the information, all those emails that came through for the, for the architects. You know, those, when they were asking for input. One of the things that came through the need was that it was a, on many of the emails, there was a lack of understanding. That, they make comments, there'd be comments made where I knew that we had a whole presentation on that. Or we had gone out and done a bunch of research that helped us come to the decision that we came to. And obviously, the public knew nothing about. And how to help the public understand, they may not like the decision that we've made. But they need to understand somehow or other that, that was not a decision that was frivolously decided. It was decided based on input from multiple factors, sometimes other community members.
So, I don't, I don't know how we build that. Something that they can get on the website, uh, do we put? The information like that on the website, so that when we communicate with the public, whether it's through the newspaper. Or, um, radio or whatever it may be, we can say, go to this website, this link. And get a deeper understanding of how this decision was made.
Well, most definitely, the transcripts are all online, is that correct, Todd? For our meetings?
Yeah, right now.
Well, so that gets down into the second paragraph, how do we achieve that?
So let's go there, because I think it may, okay, kind of what Sean called. So this is, this is your reputation with adding the word open or transparent, you can tell me which you like. Teamwork necessary and, um, this. Should be no surprise to anybody what this says. And I don't think it captures what you were just talking about. After decisions have been made, where members publicly support board decisions and actions. Which is a little bit of what Anne was talking about, of being in the present and the future. Comments, thoughts about that? It should be no surprise to anyone. So why is it important? The third paragraph is, so what, kind of like, what, what is the, um, impact?
Let's go back to this.
One second. Okay.
So, what I'm hearing is. We need to communicate better with the public. The decisions that we make are being communicated to the public. The reasons we made the decision. May or may not be communicated to the public. I'm wondering if that's leading to a lot of the conflict. I mean, we have deliberations here and give it to the opinion, and certainly the public has those. But they don't have the benefit of the information, the educational materials that we receive and reach our decision. I don't think we can go through all of it for them. You know, Bunny's idea of having a, having a link to some of the materials that they can see. Those who want to do that and go to depth, dive into it, it's there. But at least we should have something, I think, where the public doesn't have to go and search for it. You know, we communicate to them in the easiest fashion for them to understand and receive. Maybe we should have some balance here.
A summary?
A summary or, yeah, I like that. So here are the, the issues. This is the thinking we have made on this particular topic, and not all the reasons why. If you want to know more, here's a lot of it, maybe, that you can go to, for those who are real policy wise.
What kind of the?
Having a summary of it, see, these were the, in the, in the discussions that we had, here are the points that we made. Here's what the feelings are.
Here's the decision.
And here's why we came to the decision we did, knowing that it's not decided by everybody. But this is the compromise.
Where could that be? Where would, how, how would we get that out to the public, I guess, is my question. Yeah, what form would that take?
I think the printed word is great.
I think that's too much to put in a printed word. I could see a press release that says, uh, the board has made this decision to do this. And, uh, maybe a short couple of sentences about the whys or the details. If you prefer, there is a summary on, on DPL website that they can go to and see.
Like a one pager kind of back sheet or something?
So they don't have to. We through, it must be terribly boring to read through a training strip, but just a short summary. And I don't, I said to you guys, that would be up to you, I'm going to, Sean, Tom, oh my gosh, one more thing.
But you know, one of your interaction agreements is that you summarize your positions. So, you, one board I work with, um, at the end of the meeting, we actually identify the key talking points from the meeting. It's not a bad thing to do, you know, it's like, what is your big takeaway? What are your talking points that I write it at the end? And it's like, we decided X, and this is why. And, and you have to be selective, you can't overwhelm, you're, you're, you have a job to do as a board, right? You can't expect, you're elected to do the job for people, so you can't expect, you know, you can't overwhelm people. But to have the clarity of communication, I'm sorry.
Although in the management team, we have critical communications at the end of our meetings. And then, these are like the three points, knowing to let Alex's staff. So I think that they could be the critical communications coming out of this meeting.
Yeah, that's good. Does this sound, I, I don't want to, I mean, you know, here we are, talking about all of this. Does this sound like net so T?
I mean, it's a little, it's slightly overkill, because when I think about, we have minutes, we have. So we have now video recording, we have. Physical minutes, then we have agendas and packets. But I understand, in this time, we're making major decisions and there have been many disagreements. To be very clear about what that final decision is and can be clarified.
Yeah.
So, you know, maybe it's really needed in the next two years, but again, it would be very short. I don't know, over time, the media won't keep picking up.
Right.
Right.
You'll.
They'll overlook them, they'll lose interest unless we're fighting it or something.
Be selective, I mean, think about it, like, what, like, what do we really, what topic, you know?
Exactly, we don't want to overwhelm.
Yeah.
The public with information that we, um, just decided, voted to fix the boy, whatever.
Yeah.
Assistant's library, when that's competing with our public message about, hey, some readings happened.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah, good ideas, okay.
But that would be, it'd be overwhelming if you said, okay, now I've got to make that available to everybody. But if you identify critical things, that's worked well for us in our management system, to say, we, yeah, we just made a lot of decisions. Majority of which nobody's going to care about, but here's three, three that we want to make sure that.
And maybe it's, I hate to say this.
Go ahead.
Expand our minutes a little bit, because we pared down our minutes a lot, because. They were getting so long. But maybe kind of put those brief summaries not, and she said this, and she said that. He said this, and she said that, and I mean, like, not go through the play by play, but to just say, this was the decision that was reached. Based on this, you know?
So, what happens if there's disagreement in that decision? If that's, that to me has been one of the core issues again, is that speaking with one voice. So, if Bunny and, and Ray don't agree with something, then. We're putting it out to the public that this decision was made.
So you're going to vote, correct?
Right.
The vote is four to one, or three to two, or whatever, or five to zero.
Yeah.
So.
So then it's everyone a hundred percent saying, I don't agree with it, but I'm going to live true to what.
That's what your policy dictates and.
So I'm just asking, is that something everyone can commit to?
That's a, that's a real, I know we've talked about in the past, we have gone off of that. And, and I don't want to rehash the past, but I do want to know how we can do this in the future. Because, um, whatever the decision is, whether it's something I agree with or don't. It, it does exactly what you said, it causes big ramifications. Because it affects our entire staff, they're the ones out in front of the public that are having to answer questions that are confusing to them. But they don't understand this.
Right, yeah.
Right, yeah. So it's kind of the format as I see it would be, this was the decision that was made and here are the reasons.
I, I don't see putting the, the disagreements and all in there. I would say. That we came to that decision and maybe some details about the decision, whatever the public might need. But they don't need to know that I disagreed with Ray and Anne disagree.
Well, they will know the board, they will know you voted, right? So that's in the minutes. But here is what the decision is and, and we considered various options. This is how we went forward.
Yeah, and, and yeah, I think the, the fact that, the kind of the discussion. Of what was discussed, not in detail, but in, at the summary. To say, well, we looked at possible sites throughout the city and this is the one that we chose for these reasons. So, or whatever.
Would it be helpful to go back and think through a decision that we made where we were divided? And the discussion that took place? So, I, because I'm really not totally understanding. What we're, where we're thinking we're going to go with this. Can somebody think off the top of their head of a conversation or a. Decision that we made that we were divided on?
Well, I, I would add, we don't, it doesn't matter that we're divided. We could be all in agreement. But it may be an important enough issue for, for the public. That we want to summarize it for them and let them know the decision's made.
I mean, the speak with one voice piece, I think is what we're talking about. So you could be five to zero, you're going to vote. We're being recorded. I was going to give a ridiculous example, but, um, you know, we're going to merge with Jefferson County Library. Okay, like whatever, you know? We are, we talk about it, three to two, we vote. Um, and then Anne goes off and it's like, that's the dumbest idea I've ever heard, you know, I don't support that. You know, even though the board voted two, three. The voted five to zero, four to one, three to two, doesn't matter. Once the board has voted. Then the agreement is that you speak publicly with one voice, which what that means is you don't go out and. You know? Talk against it. You speak from the point of view of the, the board has spoken.
And that's where clarification, a little bit without getting into. Could say, you know, we voted to merge with Jefferson County. The board looked at, the decision was financially prudent or whatever. It might be the reason that we made that. And this is our decision. I, I see no reason to go into any arguments and after that I see no reason that anyone should. Contradict that decision.
So that's, that's how you operate it. So.
I think that the process by which we've come to a decision, the vote itself did not have critical factors, the process. Before that. And before we've been talking about speakers that actively listen to each other, delivering. That is more important than the vote, because if we disagree and we don't come to an understanding of each other's opinions. Or accept those. If someone or any number of people feel they have not. Really been understood. Then the vote is not going to change it. There are, the differences will exist after the vote, just like they existed before the vote. And if those differences exist in the community. What the vote actually does is cement us into differing opinions. Of our camps. So oftentimes I've been to vote. You don't want to take a vote until you've reached a consensus. And oftentimes that means reaching compromise. If the compromise solution. Is acceptable to everyone. Then you can speak with one voice. If we don't come to a consensus. The vote is not going to change the difference of opinion. And we're forcing ourselves. To say the minority has to be silent. And that. To me, that's. If we don't go through a process that reaches consensus. Possibly compromise, where everyone can agree that this is workable. Acceptable, as in the best interest of the community and the library system. Then we start acting like the federal government. I mean, we are not clear. A vote doesn't do it. The process before the vote. Is key.
So let me just ask a follow up question, Ray, because if that were the case. Not every process is going to be perfect, not every conversation is going to be perfect. You, what could be, and I'm just going to ask everybody this, the impact on this board and this organization? If one board member or another decided, oh, I didn't like that process or I didn't feel heard enough or. And it could be you one time and you one time and you one time and suddenly. You don't have a board anymore acting as a board. You have people as. You know, individuals working against board. I mean, I think, yes, it's really important to think about your process. And to try to reach consensus, but at some point you're, you have responsibility. To, to vote and go forward on things and. I, I, it just, um. I just have a concern if one person sort of decides, hey, you know, I didn't feel heard enough, so I'm going to work against this. It's kind of a violation of. The policies and I think it can harm. The organization. That's just, I, I hear what you're saying and I agree, it's really important to have good process. So I just, I'm throwing it out to others and yourself as well.
It is at that point though. Now, I remember in the past. We have had a board member that had a very different opinion. Especially on finance. And I was president of the board at the time. My feeling was, we won't reach a decision on this. Until that one member feels like they've been heard. If it means delaying a vote. Then we delay the vote. And eventually. The board reached a compromised position with the one person actually who understood and said, oh my God. You actually do have a good point.
So it worked.
But we don't want to go the whole way that you're saying. But it took several meetings to get to where we're. The role of the president really confused the situation. Make sure everybody's understanding everybody else. If it means waiting, spending more time. Then that is worth it in order to reach a consensus opinion on the board. And most of the time it was a compromise.
So what if, I'm going to ask everybody, what if you can't reach consensus and at some point you have to take a vote and move on because. You know, consensus can, it's great if you can do it, but you can't have the help hostage to. So what, what are others think about this?
Todd's been dying.
No, I want to hear what everybody else.
I support my position as a board member. I came on this board to. As it said, to be responsible and ethical. If we can't reach a consensus, and I'm only positive side of this board. And it's a reasonable amount of time that I have presented my case. It's like a court. I've presented my case. And that was not what this board, that's why we have a board of five members, not one or two. So I would have to, at that point, I will say, okay. That's not my opinion, but we have to move forward. And then once that vote, if it's against what I think should be. What goes out to the public is the board. The board has said this, so it has. I, I've presented my case. It didn't go my way. We have to move forward. And to try and get any kind of consensus, we've already talked about these meetings are going so long. We're going to have to have a second meeting. I'm not willing to spend. Forty hours a week for the library board and so on. So. There, you just can't go on and on with that. I think we have to look at what the board is. It's a board. Everyone presents what they feel is the right decision. If it doesn't go your way, move on.
Okay, how about others? Well, I was thinking, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, and. Compromise is really important. And so I guess in my way of thinking. The person, the person or the people who are in opposition to a decision that. They're seeing there's an opposition in the middle of our conversation. It really falls to both parties to try and think of a compromise. But most definitely, I think the people who are saying, no, I, I don't want to go that direction. They really need to come up with a reason why and a reason. How can we meld those two ideas together? If that doesn't work out and. They still end up divided and you have to make a vote. Then we all have to agree that we've done our work at trying to figure out a way to get all of us to come to consensus. And if that doesn't happen, we have a vote, we have to agree that we're all going to move forward on that vote.
Want to hear from others? And, and you know, people can't do that. It happens sometimes. People decide to leave the board. It's like, you know, I just can't and I don't agree with them. So that's an option.
I, I just like to throw out just. A lot of this discussion is good in theory, but also realize we are, this board is operating. A very large organization.
Yes.
And, um, decisions do need to be made in order to operate. And let's, let's take an example of COVID hit. And I came to the board and said, we are going to need to shut down operations. And we have a really good discussion and let's say it was three to two. But no, I, I, I think we need to stay open and I don't, I don't care that. The federal government wants us to shut down and we've got three that say, no, uh, we. Let's, let's follow along, let's shut it down. I imagine that we say, okay, well, we've talked about this, we've all heard each other. But we haven't, we haven't gotten to any compromise because really we have to make a decision, open or shut.
Mass or no mass?
Yes, uh, so let's hold another meeting the next day and that's, and that, that doesn't get it. We don't have the luxury of, of sitting there and it makes total sense and we've seen it in our community. Well, we may have people that don't believe, oh, this, this thing is a hoax. Uh, that at some point, a decision has to be made. And it may not, well, we don't, I wish I could remember the quote, I was looking for it, that Michael Greger had.
It may not be the best decision, but it's a decision.
Yes. Yes, yes. And so that's an example. There are things that we have to do. That, uh, we have to make, we have to move forward at some point. And, and so that's just the reality. And so, so that's an, that's an example of. Um, at that point, yeah, we would have to turn around and say, this is where we are going to be shutting down for the next month. Your, your reasoning and there we go. And then if, you know, at that point, I have to turn around and mobilize a hundred, uh, people. To shut down operations and explain to the public what's happening and be there at the front line. When we reopen. And if they're getting.
Mixed messages.
They're getting mixed messages in the community. We have two board members are saying, that was crazy, the whole thing's a hoax. Then they are getting, they're getting hit with all of that. So I, I think it's. I, I get that. We definitely would love to have everybody agree, but we're, we can't always do that and we do need to. Sometimes. You know, some of the things we've been doing uh, in the last year, sometimes they're too good ideas. It's just that we have, we can't, we have to move forward with one of them. And.
One is bad or one is good. And the other point I'd make is that, and then I want to hear from these guys just for a second is. That. People's perceptions of being heard sometimes are, have I brought you to my point of view? Sometimes you, you, you can go over and over and over and, you know, I can, you know. Tell my husband I want to buy a penthouse in Portland. I'm not, yeah, I'm not going to talk him into it. It's, um, where your husband with a bigger land or whatever. Where you, sometimes people think that, you know, you haven't had or you haven't been heard because people. Are not agreeing with you or the process anymore. So. At some point, the point is you're running an organization that's impacting people and staff and. And your residents. So I just want to give these guys a chance because this is really important. This is. Probably if anything has come, kind of sticky for you guys, it's this. And people have different perceptions of how, how long do we go on? So, um, any, either of you have spoken yet about it?
No, I think ideally to, if we had consensus on every decision, that would be wonderful, but I know. That may not happen. And I think as we listen to our constituents. Um, and as Todd said, there may be two great ideas in. I did, you know, if there would be an opportunity to kind of compromise and pick. The best of those to come together. Some decisions may, you know, the, the COVID one is, is a great example. That had to happen quickly. So we may not have that opportunity to have discussions to continue to kind of build that compromise. But I would like to see us have the opportunity to do that in, in certain discussions, but.
And then if you can't, where do you stand on it?
Then, then a decision needs to be made. And then move forward as a board.
And you know, sometimes, you know, I, you see me do the five finger consensus. Like now for a while, but maybe new people not. Okay, five is I'm fully in support of this idea. Really great. Four, I, I'm, I, and you paper up, and I haven't done this in so long, oh God, I don't remember. Three, um, uh, I won't, I, I can support it, but you know, I'm like kind of lukewarm about it. Um, two is I have a question. About it. Did I get these right? Am I not getting them right? And I have my computer and I'll look for me now. But one is over my dead body. And if it's one, if you're a one, you need to say. What you need to come at least a three, I'll get this for you, the right language. Get at least a three. I can support it or I will not sabotage it. And it has happened to me, Anne, in meetings where somebody, I'm a one, I'm a one on that. Well, what do you need? Well, I need this. Everybody goes up, oh yeah, you can do that. Okay, now are you a three? Yeah, I'm a three, I'm a four. Sometimes it's like, no, we can't do that. Because, you know, so, um. You know, it gives, it gives you that window to make sure everybody has a chance, but if you're a one, what do you need? What would it look like for you not to sabotage us or stand behind it or speak with one voice? Anne, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's really good. It's a good. I'd forgotten about all of that.
My brilliant stuff, it's like.
Yeah, yeah. No, and I, you know, I. This has been a good discussion and I feel like, um. I feel like I, like. We do need to make decisions in a timely manner because the public has in. That is our job as a board, is to do the board's work. And, and for instance, we've come and asked the voters for a large amount of money. And our job is to execute the plan. And build those facilities that we promised the public and, and we could discuss till the cows come home. As the money dwindled away and things got more expensive and I mean, if, if we don't act. We're just, we're not going to be able to fulfill our promises to the public and that's. In my view, kind of dilution of our responsibility. But you know, my, I think all of our goals is to deliver the best possible facilities to the public as, that we can. as that we can. You know, now what that looks like may look different to different members of this board. And we have been discussing those differences for, I don't know, three years, four years, or, you know, so a long time. And it's like, I don't feel like I lack understanding of why people feel the way they do. Because I mean, we've talked about it for a long time. And so what that consensus, I mean, I, it's like that getting heard means that you, all of a sudden, you agree with me. I, there are some things that we are not going to agree on, given the, given our stances on some of this in our history and moving forward. But, and, and I, and I am cognizant of what you said, Anne, of, you know, we look at the choices and then we make the best one that's available. And I feel like, I mean, I really feel like we've done that throughout this process. And that's the reason I feel comfortable in answering any questions that we get. Is I feel like we have good reasons. We followed a good process, a systematic process along the way. And at each step, we've made decisions that made, that were the best decisions based on what the majority of the board felt.
Well, not only that, but all along the way, we asked the public to give us input. The public has been giving us input ever since this really started. So it's not like we're not listening to our constituents. We've invited them to be part of all the decision making.
Right. And I think, and I think we, you know, and that's, that's my opinion. And I was, when I first, you have probably a second theory about this. But when I first came on the board, like the first month, we had a situation where I disagreed with the way the board was handling it. Yes. And I mean, I strongly disagreed. And I thought that it was opening up the district to potential liability concerns. And it, I was not okay, based on everything that I knew about personnel law. I thought we were doing the wrong thing. And the board didn't talk about it. And that was the board president's decision, whether or not put that discussion on the agenda. And I lobbied her and I lobbied other people on the board. And people, the board declined individually to discuss it. And, you know, that was, it was extreme for me. And so it's like, well, what am I going to do? Am I going to be a party to this, something that I think is unethical and illegal? Or am I going to abide by the will of the board? And so I had some real internal debates. And in the end, I agreed to abide by the will of the board. And, and my decision was if, if this gets to be untenable for me personally, I will resign from the board. If I am put in a position where I am, am asked to do something that I think is imprudent or unethical, I'll resign. But until that time, I've made a commitment through these working agreements, interaction agreements, that I'll abide by the decision of the board, even though I strongly disagreed with it.
Would it be prudent perhaps, at the end of our meetings, we go around and get everyone's opinion? How was the meeting? Excuse me. But if we look at these hard decisions, or maybe we had two hard decisions. We decided today to shut the libraries down. It was a three to two vote. Can you agree with this publicly? Will you agree? And everyone, force everyone to make a commitment to agree to that decision with one voice. I know we've agreed to it here, but for each decision, major decisions.
But we already have a policy that says we agree to do that.
But it hasn't been followed.
Well, right. And then, I mean, I think that's the discussion.
Yeah. I think that's what we're saying now. And you're suggesting maybe some kind of formal peace. But I think what Chantal asked me a minute ago was, can people agree to this? Can they, can they? I mean, the fact, the fact of it is, you're elected. Nobody can force you to do anything. So you really have to think about your, like Anne did, your behaviors and what it means. Because it might be money one minute, doesn't like, and it could be on the next decision. And pretty soon you're, you're not a board, you're not a governing board. You're five people being chaotic, which have impact on staff and, and money and all kinds of things. So it's like, um, nobody can make you. But I think the question you asked was, are people willing to kind of recommit to this, which is your policy? Knowing that not every process is perfect? And that you're going to try to, you know, do the things you're talking about? Can people commit to that?
It's, to me, it's kind of a matter of personal respect and to realize my role within the board is one vote. And, and we're not making individual decisions based on what we think is the right thing. We're making decisions as a group. And we can have heated disagreement, we can have honest disagreement. And we may not be able to reach consensus, but we're moving forward as a group. And, and the majority, each person does their best job to make the best decision possible. And the majority rules.
And if you're a one, you've been given a chance to say what it would be to become at least a three, just to use that.
Yeah, and I like that a lot because Yeah, and, and part of that is, is that that puts responsibility on me. If I'm an over my dead body in the minority position, it puts a responsibility on me to say what I would like to have happen. And at least put that out there to say, you know, not this, but can we talk about this instead? You know, and, and
And if it's, my point of view is, don't close the buildings at all. Keep it open, keep going. And here's why. And I read it on, you know, X and Y, you know, Twitter account or whatever. I'm just making this up, right? Yeah. So everybody listens and we vote. And Todd takes action internally in the organization and communicates that. So
But there are, it really depend upon the question. There are issues that are yes or no. There are no big things, right? But we run into a problem where the issue is not this or this. It's something else. Any, any number of possibilities, there are all a lot of options. Where I think the problem is, have we discussed all the options so that we can get off of our position? And say, yes, and it comes down to compromise. Your example of COVID is, I say yes or no. All right. We're either going to go with the federal government or the state says, or we're not. I mean, there's no compromising. Are we going to violate the law or are we not? Or we're just going to follow the laws of the state or order? So those are clearly yes or no decisions. A lot of what we have on yes. Do we sign the union contract? Do we not approve the union contract? What, are we going to go back and renegotiate the whole thing? This is pretty much yes or no, right? There are other issues. And this is where we have very strong held political positions on the board, which is also now apparently reflected within the community. These two positions are mutually not acceptable. We have to do something in between. We can't just vote. Because then we're just saying, you shall do this. Even when we say, we deliberated at length. And this is what we decided as a board. Who we decided three to two? Immediately, the public is going to say, well, wait a minute. I'm with the two. What are you guys doing? And then the others will say, I'm with the three. We won the vote. What are you guys doing? So again, if we do a vote, before we get to that position, that situation, we don't want to put ourselves in the corner. I mean, maybe it's my background, I guess. My father worked for the UN. I was surrounded by diplomats my entire life. One thing they've said is, you never back somebody into a corner. Because the only choice at that point is, they're going to come out fighting. They're not going to cave in to you. What are you crazy? They will come out fighting. And they will continue fighting because you give them no other choice. Before you get to that situation, discuss how do we keep ourselves out of that corner? That's called compromising. What are all the options we have to compromise? Even if I don't like it, what are the options?
I think people are willing to discuss. I'd be open to Anne's decision. I may think it's awack, but I'm, I'm going to listen to her reasoning. I would listen to everyone's reasoning. And then in the end, if we can't come to a consensus, which is probably going to happen in a lot of cases, and we want five different people, and these are hard decisions, then we have to move forward. We have to vote and move forward. And it, it, it is pointless to beat this dog to death when I'm never going to agree with that decision Anne had. But I'm going to listen and I'm going to say, okay, well, maybe there's a little bit of that that I can put in here. And a little bit of Anne's or someone else's in there. Okay, I can look at that. You're three to one. But you have to move forward. And if it's three to two vote, it's a board decision.
I agree with you when you're saying, it's not either or. I can strongly disagree with your opinion. But if I'm willing to take something, we're going to move in between. That's the compromise.
Well, I may not accept it.
Yeah.
You may say, here's the in-between. Here's what I want. Okay, I understand what you're saying, but I agree with it. And I'm still going to vote in this other way. Sometimes you can't because it's like you're on that road, not on that road. Have you?
I can think of an exact example of a board meeting that we had was like that. It was brought up early in the, well, early in the process when we were, I don't even think we had a piece of property yet. And we were discussing the idea, you, you really wanted us to look at the idea of rather than a large central library, you really wanted us to look at the idea of other multiple branch libraries. And we spent an entire board meeting talking about that and looking at it and discussing it. And it was a long discussion. I personally was very open to your idea. I had just returned from the meeting. We'd gone to the LA conference in Washington. And I'd gone to a workshop, workshop that talked about that. And so I was very open to your idea. But after looking at all the data, if the decision was made, we needed a large central library, a place that was going to allow us to expand later on in the future. If we need to have more individual libraries in communities. That was a huge decision. It was, we got to a point where there wasn't any compromise. It was one or the other. We didn't have any other place to go. We looked at the possibility for compromises and couldn't find one. And so we went to a vote. We voted four to one on the issue. And so there are going to be times at the end of a discussion that my idea is not going to be the same as everybody else's. And I'm going to have to get on board with what everybody else is saying because we do have to move forward.
I don't think consensus and compromise means that I have to, we have to accept whatever that person wants, whatever their opinion is. We don't have to accept that. We have to act as a board. We have to act despite people looking at all the possibilities. And if I can't, or none of us can agree with any of it, a little of it, whatever. That's what a board is about. It's not that I, I have a difference of opinion. You listen to me and accept and put in whatever my opinion is. That can't happen.
But, but we need to listen to you when you have the differing idea. It's my job to listen to you. And if you want more information, we need to go to Todd and say, we need more information on this so I can actually come to a decision.
And it was more than, probably more than a meeting where you didn't talk about.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So, but my question is, okay, and we're talking about the building, but it could be any major topic.
Right.
What's the impact on the organization? If every time, you know, there will be times you will not be able to reach compromise. And you will have hopefully had a good process and listened to each other and whatnot. If you, if you aren't able to speak with one voice, then, I mean, if you are able, this last paragraph is like kind of valued to the organization. But I'd ask it the flip way. What, I mean, without getting into the specifics, I know there's been impact on staff of the discord around this decision and financial impacts. And, and it could be any, any discussion, it could be any topic.
Before you go there,
Yeah.
What I'm hearing here is not what my thing, my vision of a compromise is. And here is, you have two positions. You take a little bit of this, you take a little bit of that. Is there something you can do with it? What I found a compromise is, you can remove both of those. And what is there that achieves, that satisfies the principles and the feelings, the opinions of both parties? That is not a melding of the two positions. Because sometimes you cannot meld the two positions. Compromise is coming up with something new based upon what you're hearing from the people who have two strongly held opinions. It's totally new. It's not just half of this and half of that. You know, you can't have half of the building be big and half of the building be small. You know, it doesn't happen. But compromise is thinking outside of your own position. This is why I found in the past, when I take the opposition's position and start arguing for it, I'm going, oh, wait a minute. There's something here. I still don't agree with you on this. But the reasoning here is solid. We need to develop something different than what I say and different from what you say. What is there that we can do that? And if we cannot reach that as a compromise, then we are going to be dysfunctional.
So that's part of the process. That's a very legitimate point.
Is key to reaching the decision. And sometimes the way we phrase the question becomes the problem. We're asking the wrong question.
So really important what you had to say. And that is thinking about, yeah, sometimes you look at both options and you come up with a completely different
Or you ask a different
way to go or ask a different question. But what we're asking here is, once you've gone through that process, so I'm going to come back to this. Once you've gone through that process, can people agree and, and agree to your policy, which is speak with one voice?
If we go through that
If you go through that process. But that doesn't mean going back over previous, I mean, you, going forward, you've made some decisions. So, you know, that's, at some point, you, you've made decisions. Yep.
So compromise, I'm feeling, we weren't using the same definition of compromise. Forward. Forward, also concerning. Because moving forward, when I say I want you to move forward, usually I imply I want you to do what I want. And somebody else says, let's move forward. It's doing what they want. This is the antithesis of coming to a compromised decision. Moving forward is not a reason, like time is not a reason to cut off discussion and deliberation. Really going through a process, we are going to do this process, but we have to have an understanding. If we, as a board, have two differing opinions, that's also reflected within the community, then we have to step back and say, whoa, maybe neither of these is the right thing to do compared to making armed camps. What's the real question we should be asking?
Okay, let me, I think you've made a point. I'm going to go to these two to give other people a chance. Yeah.
I like what you said about the fact that if I'm in the process of not really agreeing with what's coming up, look at it different, look at it through a different way, ask a different question, then I think it's my responsibility as a board member, if I'm the one questioning the direction we're going, I think it's my responsibility to then come up with a different question that redirects our focus. So I think, I think that's a good idea. And I think that's something that each of us has to internalize and do ourselves. Go ahead.
We may be in situations where it's, say it's four to one, and the question is, how do we? And I have been in this situation where the one person in opposition said that's wrong. And I said, what would you like to see happen? And the answer back to me was, that's your job. Now, that's not compromise. And so let's get that out of the table. Let's help in the room. Is, I've never heard from Ray another solution as to what can happen. I've never heard a compromised solution. And so how do we compromise with that? If no example ever comes forth, what does the rest of the board do? And I, and I want to use that as an example. I'm not, I want to point fingers. I just want to say, we may be in situations like that in the future where we've got four board members that are willing to act. We've got one that says, this is what I want. Try to figure out what else there is. That's not my job. And three, that's not compromise. That's, that's, I don't know what that is. It's something that makes it impossible for the rest of the board to try to figure out how to get to a, another solution.
Right. I mean, I think it's, I think that's really important to say, if we're going to say, not this, then, then what? And what is that compromise? And, and, and if it shifts constantly, we can't ever, we can't ever have that discussion. And it's like, well, today, it's, this is wrong, and today, that's wrong. And it's like, it's like chasing, it's like squishing Jell-O or something. I mean, it's shooting out in different directions, and you never, you never can have that discussion because the issue changes constantly.
What can we agree that if you ask that question, well, what is it? That that board member will be as specific as possible to say, this is exactly what I want for a compromise?
You know, I'm a one, and this is what it would look like. This is what it would look like. I really like that. Because, I mean, that's what we were trying to get at at the, I guess, the last meeting, it seems like so long ago, about where do you stand going forward? What, what, what do you want to see happen? And to get a clear idea of that so we can at least have the discussion.
The other thing I think is important to remember is, just because people don't come to agree with you doesn't mean that you weren't heard. Okay? Like, you could, like, make your point over and over again. People could repeat it back. You could go through all these, look for other options, and then at some point, okay, you're moving forward. And I think that's, that's the question is, can people support, speak with one voice? Because if you don't, it has an impact on this organization.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up, Todd, because I did ask. I didn't, actually, I put it in the bulletin. So I brought copies of it for you guys for those. Because not everybody reads bullets. It actually came out when I was out, when I was in Hawaii.
We saw it, but it didn't occur at the meeting. So that's, that was what was devastating again, at least from a communication standpoint. At the meeting, there was one group that was not stated, and then it's sent out to the bulletin, and the whole public sees that before this team has even heard it.
Well, I've been trying to say this.
But that's a dangerous move.
Right. But I've been trying to say this for the last two years possibly. And I guess I haven't communicated correctly for this. This is just alternatives. It didn't say, this is what we need to do. It just brings up the point that they're all alternatives to the two positions.
So let's assume, I want to go back for a second. Let's assume no one's listening to you ever, okay? Which is not the case. But what is the impact of, of going outside? Like Anne's example of she didn't agree, she was almost ready to resign. I just think, I'm having a hard time understanding why this kind of behavior would occur and be knowing everybody's commitment to this organization and to the way you've operated for so long, and the impact it has on everything you do. It's just confusing me as your consultant. It like, it hurts me.
This is a good example. So at the, at the board meeting, we went around and said, what would you like to see happen? And we didn't get an answer from Ray. But we all, but this is, this came out. This would have been amazing to go to the board meeting.
Yeah, right.
What an amazing discussion we could have had at the board meeting.
We could have gone through a paragraph by paragraph. But, but not being willing, I mean, and that's getting back to these working agreements of like actively engaging and stating those opinions so that we can discuss them as a group, rather than going out and doing an indron and contacting, putting them out there in the public without ever, whether, without having raised those ideas within a board setting, is like, that's, that's what has led to some of the armed camp. You know, because then, I mean, it just causes all kinds of confusion in the public. It causes bad feelings within the board. I mean, I feel, it makes me feel personally attacked when things like that happen. It makes me feel blindsided. And it's that trust component that has really been missing from all these board meetings.
And what about the impact on staff?
Actually, I remember when this came out, when I read it, and many of these things have been discussed. We've brought many of these up in the past. We discussed them. And because we don't, maybe we can't come to an agreement, doesn't mean we're not listening to you. I think it's really important that we realize what I'm saying may not be in agreement with everybody else. So that's what a board is. I mean, we're five people with very different ideas, different lenses of how we look at things.
And I just want to point out, I don't want to take this as an opportunity. This is not an attack on anything you're doing, Ray. I think it's just an example for us to use in the future. And that is, it's really important that we have, and we talked about it earlier, we need to have a meaningful discussion with the board. Because it just doesn't help us to get to the, and even some of the, and because we're in positions, like even looking at the team, I'm kind of part of one looking at land as well. I think some of the things we're looking at actually meet some of the things that were raised, lettered to the bulletin. But I sure would love to be in a point where I'm trying to get information based on what I, in full, not where I read the newspaper. So that, that's just something for us to.
I think this looks to me like somebody who wants to be a one-person board. And you can't. If you want to be a one-person board, then when the decision doesn't go your way, you go outside and try and drum up support. You can't be a one-person board. We're a five-person. And if you disagree, then you should disagree within this board and not in the public eye.
Well, we should have said in the public eye, but.
Absolutely. Have the real meeting, but the board.
Have the real meeting, but in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
But have, have either of you two seen any of these alternatives before?
Oh, I haven't read it. I don't get the bulletin, so I'll read it.
I don't, I don't believe you don't have. Cynthia may have.
Okay, that's a good. I don't want to, this is slippery slope to get into the specifics of your building, but the example, an example.
Bonnie shouldn't have to subscribe to the bulletin.
Yeah, right.
We should discuss it.
Right, right, right.
So I think trying to discuss this in our meetings. And what we've heard, what I've heard is that the process, we need to move forward. We're spending enough time. But I don't believe we've gone through this process of actually discussing because the board has changed. And very frankly, the board has made, the composition of the board has been erratic change. When our board president, standing on central library, our facility plant, is defeated, it's telling me, whoa, it's not just disagreement or strongly held opinions on the board. It's strongly held opinions in the general public. We're responsible.
That's a matter of opinion. Okay. So it's, I mean, if you, what is concerning is how you can go forward in this fashion. Because who you listen to, who people get their information from, cherry picking or whatever, you pass a bond, right? You pass something. Maybe you would have liked to have been, had a higher amount, but I don't understand how as a board, you can go forward. This is an example. There will be other examples where, where any board member would go outside of the board and not bring something to the board. And if people don't agree at some point to the other person's perspective, then, then, you know, at some point, it ends back to Anne's example or any example, you either speak with one voice or you retrace yourself or you leave the board because you have to operate in organizations. So I don't, I really don't understand. I understand Ray, and we are going to discuss something specific, that you don't feel like you, all these options have been looked at. So how, how can you operate within the policy if you send out ads to the bulletin? And, you know, I don't understand if you're going to continue to do that, the impact that that will have on this organization. It seems counterproductive to me as your consultant. I, I, I get that you don't like the decision, and you feel like it hasn't been fully vetted, but. But those decisions, those decisions were made. And if the, even if the composition of the board changes, we still have a commitment to the voters to deliver what we ask them to fund. And, and if we don't do that, we're not, I mean, legally, we're not doing our job as a board. And, and I look at the fallout of this, and what hurts my heart the most is here we take this beloved library system that we have spent the last 20 plus, 25, you know, 30 years building, that we have devoted time and attention to and that the public loves. The public loves our libraries for good reason because we're one of the most creative, forward-thinking districts in the state. We're providing amazing services to the public. People that move here can't believe it. And, you know, and so we take this and we have just trashed the reputation of this library district. And people think we don't know what we're doing. They think we don't know what we're doing as a board, you know, because they've been, they have misinformation, and they, and they look at it and go, these people are nuts. They, it's mismanaged. They don't know what we're doing. We make Sean calls like a living hell and Todd's like a living hell, trying to manage an organization where the employees are saying, what's going on? You know, and that's not, I mean, we're not providing visionary leadership. We're destroying the organization that we were elected to run.
I'm concerned about her process. I want to ask about this word process because it sounds to me like you want to process all this information. Should it be a bigger library? Should it be community libraries? And we're going to process for eternity. We're going to process until you get what you want. And that's not a process. A process is where we look at everyone's opinion in some sort of timely manner. You present your opinions succinctly, and then we vote on it.
So the process is what.
You have a saying I want to say, and I want to move on. Yes, you've been sitting a long time, but we'll continue and is, I would not make any assumptions about what anybody's opinions are or they're voting on this board. Okay? Like Martha, I sat in meetings, this stuff has been discussed for years. Martha, at the beginning, was really not supportive at all of the lane that you chose there and the bond that you passed. But you went through several years of studying. And in the end, her views changed because she represented the whole district, not just, you know, you all represent, I mean, Anne, you're representing part of that. It's in your district. So I would not make any assumptions about where anybody is going to land on things because you, the idea is to listen to each other in these meetings, listen to staff, listen to the experts that you bring in, and then make the best decision you can and move forward. So I also want, I think it's just really important not to pigeonhole anybody in the camps as you work together. You have your own brains and opinions and learning and approach the thing. So that feels really uncomfortable to me to divide people up like that. I would make room for people to think for themselves. So I want to move forward on this because we could spend the next eight hours on this and get a feel for how your meetings go. But I would say, nobody can force anybody to keep to these policies and agreements. I think it's really up to the individual board member and their conscience and their knowledge of what is good governance to think about how they are interacting with their fellow board members and the public and staff, et cetera. So this is your vision. I know you didn't like that word, but this is your picture of what you would like it to look like. You know, you can't, you're elected, you can do, you'll do what you're going to do. But be very aware, as you do that, of the impact it has on the trustworthy now, some view of this organization. That's all I kind of want to say about that.
Should we make this statement, each one of us going around saying whether or not we can.
Support this.
Support this because to me, the main piece that I think we're all discussing is that last sentence in the second paragraph. After decisions have been made, board members publicly support board decisions and actions.
So you want to do five per three to one? Or go around in each one? I don't want to open it up to like the conversation we've already had. Five per three to one. I fully support it. I can, I'm in support of it, and I can live with it, agree not to sabotage it. I still have a question, but we've already talked about the questions. I'm going to kind of try to move on. And one, uh-uh, and here's what it would take for me to be at least three. Okay, ready? One, two, three, four, five. Okay, thank you. Nicely done. Nicely done. I know this is hard, you guys.
The question though, what is it that's going to stop this? What are we gonna do to stop this? This is what's.
Going outside the board?
Yes.
Okay, let's, that's a good question, because I think it goes to something Anne brought up right at the beginning of how your meetings are structured and whatnot. So we have like a half an hour left, right, with me?
Yeah.
Well, you needed this, didn't you, you guys needed this?
Okay, so, oh, there's so many things I wanna do in this time.
Well, let me say, since I am the loyal opposition.
Well, hey, well, I want her to speak for herself.
Okay, I want to.
Okay.
I agree with Anne. We should separate critical issues from just our normal board meeting. Right, I think we all agree to that. There are certain critical issues, even though we've made decisions. We are still not in agreement as a board on the decisions that were made. Now, does that mean we go back and reevaluate all the decisions we've made? I don't think so, but we've reached in the past that was brought about because we could not build a country location we bought. All right, this has given us a brick wall. The choices, and Todd said, three choices are out there, we're taking the third path, which is looking for another decent property. I think this now gives us the opportunity to go back to the old and say, the piece of property, size of it is based upon the size of the building. Did we or did we not promise a hundred thousand square feet? We promised a central library. Let us define, because I don't know that we have really gone through, and you two have, a discussion of what is central library? What are the functions we need in there? And what is it gonna take to have those? And then what are the options? Do we have to have all of them in one building or not? What are the alternatives? What are other options? To still provide a central library, what we call a central library, to meet the bond regulation, bond rule.
But that's six years of work that the board did, and you're gonna go another six years to do it again?
It may only take one year. But we have consultants that were library consultants. We have, we really even know what the public is thinking, because.
The public doesn't have the opportunity to listen to all those library consultants. The public elected us to make those decisions. That's what they elected us to do.
Right, and my feeling was, in terms of going through and looking at all of our options, the public input we had, one, it was, the times have changed dramatically. We cannot disguise this. Things have changed in society.
I don't think so.
I disagree. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, hold up, hold up, hold up. Okay. Um, sure. You have crossed the river in some decisions, you have spent years making decisions. You, it doesn't sound like there is support on this board for going back and doing the process that you just described, right? So I know you're looking at specific land, right? But, um, this is the issue of, of kind of coming back when it doesn't, it hasn't, how can I say, you've gone through a process, you've had a lot of public, you've had a lot of experts, I don't wanna be the one to speak to this, somebody else would be better here. But it's like, how can you move, where are you now, and what do you do next? What is the next big piece of work?
And that's, I think that's the discussion we tried to have a collapsed work session of where are we now, what do we need to do next? And what's the path forward? I mean, that was what that whole polling the board thing was at the last meeting. And I mean, we clearly heard from you, Ray, that you think, all the things that you were, that you said then about times have changed, the situation has changed dramatically, you don't think the public input that we got was valid, um, all of those things. So we, we listened and we heard you, and then as we moved around the room, other people, I expressed the opinion that we felt like the decisions that had been made were based on uh, valid public input that conditions had not. I mean, you know, obviously the world, world continues to evolve all the time, right? I mean, conditions are always changing. But you know, we, we made those decisions based on some fundamental principles and some fundamental goals.
And long-term.
Long-term goals for the, for how our community is changing in the future, and that that was, um, that the, the reasons behind those decisions had not changed, and that we, because of all of that, all of the work that has been done before, that we were not willing to restart that process from scratch. And that, that part of that, at least from my perspective, was based on, we can't afford another six years of work. I mean, it's just like, as, you know, sands through the hourglass, we are under a time commitment. Time is money, and we hear that from Greg, and we, we know that from our own personal experience. So, um, so yeah, so three of, at least three of us said, we're not willing to restart the process. We're not willing to go back and reconsider all the decisions that have been made before. Uh, because we believe those were based on a sound process, sound goals, and, and the dis, the choices that we made were the, the, the ones that addressed what we were trying to achieve the best way, you know?
So now what?
So now what?
Now what? How are you going to, knowing that, knowing that fact, then you, every board member has a choice of participating in the decisions that are before you, which are like, so like in the land and other many decisions that you have before you, um, in a way that hopefully builds trust of the board among yourselves and with the community.
So kind of a challenge in that is, we do tend to run into, we just keep rehashing the same arguments over and.
Yeah.
And so I just wanna be conscious of how we let people be heard.
Yeah.
Because if we keep redoing the same arguments, it's, it, I can see, or you get the sense that I'm not being heard.
So that's a question, yeah. How do you not rehash a decision that the board has already made and leave others, and it could be any decision that we're talking about, your facilities plan, obviously, if, with the feeling they haven't been heard when decisions have been made?
And, and it goes both ways.
Yes.
People that voted for it, and then, and a year later, you're just going over the same argument. You're not being heard.
Right.
So I, and then that's just, I guess, so let's take a, I'd love to take advantage of a concrete example.
Go ahead.
Because we are going to be having a discussion about buying land today. And so what do we do in that situation where we're gonna have to make a concrete decision? And how do we do that in a way that everybody is heard, that, that we can, so, but we can actually make some decisions, and they're kind of going back, that one thought I had is not making a decision is a decision.
Right.
Uh, so inaction has ramifications. Uh, good examples, we started this process six years ago, uh, because we're very concerned about the population. Well, in the deliberations over the last six years, we've had about forty thousand people move into our county. And I was just looking at numbers coming forward, we're gonna have like two hundred and seventy thousand people in our community by the year twenty sixty-five. Then it's gonna have over two hundred thousand people. Where, where we're making arguments about, this is too big a library for our community, what community are we talking about? Because, right, it's gonna be too small, the libraries for community of two hundred thousand. Um, so there are ramifications though, because we can sit and deliberate this stuff. But right now, just the time delay is, is gonna cost us fourteen million dollars.
Yeah.
And lost buying them.
Right.
And that's just if we move right away. By the end of this, if we deliberate long enough, we probably will have small libraries, because we have lost that money. But, but how do we, but I just wanna know how we may, this, we have to make some important.
So you're in the middle of a meeting.
Yeah.
And you're talking about the land, and all of a sudden, somebody brings up, well, let's look at this other option of having this, you know, smaller libraries. That's, I think the question to you ask yourselves is, have we already discussed it? Have, have, and has an attempt been made to listen and hear what the other person has to say? Doesn't mean you've agreed, and if you've already discussed it and passed it and voted on it, then it's a challenge for the, for the chair, but it, you, I, I would think you wanna give some, um, um, power to the chair to say, hold on, have we discussed this? Have we made a decision? We, we know you don't agree with it, but we're not gonna go there. We're talking about, you're like, would you say stay on target? Because otherwise, you could have a whole meeting that goes completely sideways on something that you've talked about over and over and over again. So I don't know how you wanna do that without somebody feeling they're being shut down.
Yeah, and I, I wonder whether, I mean, I like those questions. And I, and, and I also think, I mean, there's something, some issues that have been raised that the, would, that most of the board does not wanna revisit the issue.
Right.
You know, and so, I mean, that, that may be another question is to say, do we wanna revisit this issue? Do we wanna talk about, do we wanna talk through this again?
I was thinking, after we've had the presentation, after we've had a discussion, after we've had our questions answered and we're getting ready for a vote, would it be helpful if each of us goes around and says, my thinking at this point in time is this? You know, I, I can agree with this part, but I can't agree with this part. I mean, and then if it seems like one of us has, um, a, a disagreement or, or still is questioning, could we then look at that question before we took a vote? Would that be helpful to us?
Well, sure, I mean, that's what the discussion, in a proportion of the board meeting is, I mean, before each issue is supposed to be.
Right, but there's lots of times the discussion isn't in saying, this is what I'm thinking, my discussion is.
Right, right. Like to expand on that and just go around and sort of do board.
Round robin, I mean, here's where I am, but it's, at that point, if you call for a vote on something, same, assuming it needs to be voted on, like a land or something, you, but somebody will say, but we haven't looked at this other thing, and somebody will say, well, yeah, we actually did. We have discussed that last year, a year before, whatever.
Right. Would that be helpful?
I, sorry, I can see it being helpful, because we've had a, but two or three occasions last year where we had discussion. Nobody really indicated where they're voting, and then we came out with a forty-one vote, or we had a, a extension with no explanation as to why.
Right, and I mean, I, I did that last time was to ask, what can you explain? Because we can't ever move forward, or we can't ever understand unless, you know, say, I mean, it's like this.
So I'm a five, or I'm a four on this, or I'm a this, and I don't support this because X, right?
Like this, to do that before we take them.
Right, right, yeah. Right, well, that's part of the discussion, right? Round robin, here's where I'm at. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah. No, my mind is just really, but it brought back, you know, Todd says today, we're, we're gonna make some decisions on land purchase. But for me, some of the parameters around the facilities plan is kind of changing. Because at Roble Road, a lot of the budget went into infrastructure. The new properties we're looking at, the developers are going to be doing that, so I think there's gonna be some budget changes there. The other is, if we do decide on land on the east side, there has maybe been discussion about that could, so, or, be the East Bend, making a library, so there's a lot of little pieces that, to me, would be important to know to decide on where the new land should be, do we wanna revisit this? I think there's gonna be some budget changes that maybe we could go back and look and say, um, you know, maybe some of the money we're saving from East Bend and from infrastructure could then go into, you know, the entrance at Sun, at Sun River, just as an example. Because there was thought that that, if more money could be put into that, that front entrance could be enhanced more. So for me, there are some questions there that, right now, I don't have the answers to, and I think that would be helpful.
What you're saying is exactly what a board member should do. That is like, perfect, what you just said, because that is your job to raise those questions and raise them here.
Right.
And, um, get those, because in order for you, anybody to make a big decision, you wanna know, like, what, what you just said. Specifics of.
Right, it was our facility, right?
Yeah, 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 no. Right.
Well, yeah, and it's like, we need more information, and I mean, those are, and it's like, what we were saying at the very beginning is like, are we operating off these sort of assumptions that we've never ever talked about? You know, and I, so I think that that's exactly right.
Yeah, right, but having those discussions in the board meeting together is what you wanna do. So that you all have the big picture, and then you work together and you speak. You speak for, each person speaks for themselves, and then with one voice, when you get that done. But you also wanna ask, ask yourself, so, round robin, where am I on this? What questions do I have? What more information do I have? You might need a work session to kind of cover some of that stuff, right? I think what I heard you say with Anne was, it's, at the beginning, work sessions allow you to maybe have more efficient business meetings, because you feel like you have that information. You don't wanna be pushed into a decision where you don't have that picture. Is that, is that a fair? Okay, so, okay, so we're running out of time. I wish I had more time with you all. There's some, we, I didn't even get to the interaction agreements, but I think this is really more important. So what does this mean for like what you're gonna do this afternoon? But we're gonna take a break. Tell me how this affects what you're gonna do this afternoon. Like, what's on your agenda?
I am hoping that because we as a board all agree to the vision statements, we agree. We can agree that we agree, we may not have all been a five, but we as a board agree to those three requirements. So we've accepted that. I would like the outside, whatever you call this, to stop now, because we have a room to talk with one of us and discuss it with them.
I can agree to that.
Good.
If we discuss it here, right? We'll look at, we really have deliberations, Anne says, maybe in a separate session, so we would have not the time to stream of a normal board meeting. I'm wondering if one of the first steps we could take is because I have strong feelings that I have not been, or I've not expressed myself yet. You have strong feelings, then you've made a decision. We're gonna do a pass on that. Maybe what we need is a session with a mediator. If nothing else, then you might be able to use me or point out to me why I'm not listening to you or vice versa, right? But having a mediator do at least one session for us to try and bring us back down, turn down the heat.
Well, that, that's not the question or the statement that I was making, I was making that we agree to those.
Oh, yeah, I can agree to that.
So if you don't get your way, I don't want this to happen.
It's not like getting my way.
That's my perception.
So there we have a difference, right?
Right.
And that's why I'm saying mediator can help us overcome this.
Ray, mediator's not a mediator. Mediator. Ray, mediators, not a mediator. Mediators, um, mediate between two camps. Okay, like in a mediation of a divorce or custody or some kind of an issue. That's not what this is though. It's not your point of view versus the decision, the, whatever decision that was made going forward. It's not like you're going to mediate those two because you, the board has made a decision. So I'm, I'm curious what, what benefit would accrue from that.
Who would you suggest then?
Well, I think, hopefully, just following what we're talking about today, which is, you know, deliberating together, um, accepting when decisions have been made and, you know, keeping, speaking with one voice. I would suggest people follow the, follow your policies is what I would suggest. I don't know, I mean, I think mediators are great when you need a mediation between, we're gonna do this or that, or find another common ground. But that's not what, I don't believe this group is looking at is another option for facilities. I don't believe. So, I don't know what the benefit would be. I think the benefit would be to follow what we were talking about. And what people agree to. That's just me. Yeah.
Well, just as Bunny asked for a, a consensus on something, I'm gonna ask for a consensus. That during the process of our discussion, that we make sure if we have questions. If our, we have concerns that come up, that we, it's my responsibility to ask that question um, of the board, or to let my feeling be known. So can we all agree that we will do that, that we will ask those questions and bring up?
Follow this, this model that you're talking about?
Yeah.
And summarize at the end?
Yeah, I think that's, otherwise, I don't know what my fellow board members are thinking.
So you're saying being a little more structured about getting people's points of view?
Right.
Right.
I have, just since we're running.
Out of time.
Out of time.
Yeah.
We kind of left it as, I don't have a answer for how we're going forward with discussions. Is that, is that a commitment of the board that we're going to have an additional meeting per month where we?
Yeah, let's talk about that. Yeah, I think that's. Let's talk about that. So, when is your, first of all, is there anybody besides Ray who thinks you want to bring in a mediator? Okay, so go for it. What, how do you want to go forward with your meetings?
I, I think, um, I really, I like what Anne said a lot. I mean, and they, and we talked, we've talked about this for a bit. Because I think we all need to go much.
Yeah.
You know, like, and, and there are things that we should, there are things that we should be talking about in depth. And, and I think, but part of that. So some additional sessions would be helpful, and I don't think seven-hour marathons are necessarily ideal.
So, sessions, are you talking about?
Huh?
Work sessions?
Work sessions outside of regular board meetings. And, and on, and, and targeted work sessions. So I think we need to be able to agree as a board on what it is that we want to discuss. So, I mean, you know, to, to say, okay, we're gonna have a work session on alternatives, um, to, like, because we're not an executive session, um, I don't want to be too specific. But, but what do our decisions around property, um, what are the, the concepts that we want to discuss around that? And, and then, and, and come to an agreement. So for instance, do people want to revisit the size of the central library? Do people want to revisit, um, do we want to talk about property in general? What is the future of the existing property that we own? Because we never really talked about that. So like, maybe pick a topic or two and have a meeting just on those topics. And if everybody, you know, if the majority of the board says, we don't want to talk about the size of the central library, then that is a decision. I mean, does, does that make sense?
So what you're saying is a one-hour targeted session outside of the regular meeting?
Well, I'm not sure on some of these whether we can do it in an hour.
Yeah.
But I'm saying maybe on a different day, depending on what the topic is. Some things we could probably say, we're gonna meet from ten to eleven on the board meeting day. Because that would, you know, or whatever. But, but some of them are bigger discussions. Where we, I mean, we would benefit from having a couple hours to talk about some of these.
Especially now with all, with the discussions that have come up and, yeah.
What do other people think?
Yeah. So this is the proposal, with some additional work sessions that hopefully would then allow you to have not the marathon meetings that you've been having, where people are gonna go brain dead and fall over their chairs, you know? That would be a goal.
Yeah, as far as the agendas, could we have a discussion of what would be on the next agenda?
Right.
As a group, or have two or three, you and Todd and another member alternate through and decide agendas?
Right. Because I mean, I, I want it, I want it to be more all of us deciding, rather than putting it on me and then saying, well, she made the wrong choice or whatever, you know? I mean, it's not, I, I think it should be all of us, so that we really talk about the issues that we all want to talk.
In addition, when you summarize.
They're talking about the, these extra work sessions.
Yeah, right, right, right. So I mean, you're summarizing at those sessions, then you're gonna take some time to go, okay, what's, what do we really need to know next? And do you have an idea, like, what those would be, what are the critical sessions you would like to have right now?
I think this one around the what ramifications does our property choice have on the rest of the project as a whole? I don't know how to say that broadly. Is that, but I think you know what I'm, you know, understanding what I mean?
Yeah, your work sessions are.
Yeah. Right. And, and I mean, that one might be an executive session, probably.
Okay, but you're saying, but property choice impact on?
Facilities plan as a whole. And in the, yeah, and they may or may not be an executive session, depending on how.
Okay. Is that like the top, top of the list?
And then, sorry, the other question is how often and when? Because we were scheduling them quarterly, but we've already had like three in the last four months.
Yeah.
I think almost monthly is right now for what's going on.
And then, and then just, you know, commitments of scheduling them is a challenge.
Yeah. If we can ever squeeze in one of those educational.
Right, I really need that, that boosts me up about the staff.
Or would you call, I'll just write educational staff there.
Yeah.
Okay. What was it about, um, the one you were suggesting?
Intellectual freedom.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. So, okay, so let's see, let's summarize. You've agreed to have two weeks scheduled work sessions for at least the next bunch of time. Hopefully have the result in not eight-hour, seven-hour, regular business meetings. First of all, and focus on your property choice impact on, so this plan, a lot of the questions that Anne was bringing up. You would, um, because in those work sessions, you're not making decisions, so that things would come back to the board meetings. At those board meetings, part of making decisions, you would do round robin, make sure everybody has been heard, ask questions. If you need more information, um, after you take a vote, summarize and critical, what do we call it, critical?
Communication.
Communication out and and also what, what you want to do next. That kind of what's top of mind for some guys. About trying that. What I do know is that you all care deeply about this library district. I, there's no question that, I mean, you all care and, and care about the mission and, and there are different points of view. And it's hard to talk through that. But maybe give it a try here. Try this. Sometimes talking things over and over and over actually can, it, it's good sometimes to just try some new steps.
Right.
Sometimes, then, you know, kind of rehashing what isn't working well. Just give this a try and see. Because I think you all, you all want the best for the district. And yeah, there are different points of view, and that's good. But you also are responsible for the district. You hold it in trust for the community. I don't know. I, I'm, I love you all. I don't, I feel like I wish I could, you know, help you more, but it's up to everybody.
So this was a big help. I think, I think this is a very productive meeting.
Okay. Are you gonna eat something while, and take a break and use the restroom?
Thank you. Oh, I will.
A gurn and going rethinking.
I really do.